We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Just so everybody's aware, Councilor Bedison is on the speakerphone with us tonight. She's at the municipal league conference. And there's no ceremonies, no proclamations, nobody signed up for public input. So we'll move straight to council comments. Councilor Cook, would you like to start?
Uh, no comment.
Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to invite the people, the citizens, to go eat after with them. They have a very good meal. It costs you $2.25 for age 60 and over. Please support them. And if you go regularly, under 60 will be $8. Also, I have a question for Mr. Scavern. If he has heard anything on the charter that was down here in, back in the, back in the eighties?
Did you want me to give you a little background on it?
I can hear, I can hear, um, how this got him.
He hasn't talked.
Well, I thought he just said something.
I, I said something, but I did not push the little red button.
I can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
It's council comments, councilor, so bear with us while we get through this.
Uh, well, I remember you and I have talked about this in the past. I think I've talked with each councilor about this in the past. And you said that maybe the public would want to know a little bit about the charter and the value of it. So, yeah, I'd be glad to say a few words about it. A little bit of the history was in the 18, our charter is dated 1878, but it was originally created in 1876. In 1876, the town developed a charter and was going to ask Santa Fe to approve it. At that time, Santa Fe was a hotbed of corruption, being dominated by a corrupt ring, the Santa Fe Ring, it was called. And Grant, both Grant County and the town of Silver City gave serious thought to seceding from the state of New Mexico because of the endemic corruption that was existing up in our capital. As a result, and in order to keep this part of the state from joining with Arizona, the state legislature awarded us a very generous charter. And that was in 1878. That's our current charter. That, right now, is the only territorial charter existing in the state of New Mexico. This charter has, gives the town the highest level of self-governance of any municipality in the state. About 20 years afterwards, the federal government, the United States Congress, decided that giving a municipality special status within a state was not appropriate to continue. So they passed a law, it's called the Springer Act, where they said, "No more can any territory or state grant a special level of charter, a special level of self-governance, to only one municipality." It had to go, if it was going to go to a municipality, it had to go to everybody. So, but they did not revoke the Silver City Charter. So I believe in the United States, the charter for the town of Silver City is a very unique document, granting the highest level of self-governance, something that's not even limited as home rule is limited. Because in home rule, the municipalities can do anything that's not expressly forbidden or anything that has been totally preempted by the state, with certain exceptions. So in the past years, at least the last 12 or 13, whatever it is that I've been here, I've been very careful when we do an ordinance to indicate that it is not limited to the authority granted to us by the state of New Mexico, that we have certain other powers that we gained before New Mexico was a state, and we're not giving them up anytime soon. Now, it's a delicate walk to assert the charter without bringing a lawsuit from Santa Fe, who, as we've all talked about over these past years, has sought to basically take away as much local power as they could and centralize as much power as they could in Santa Fe. Whether it was good or bad, they, in my opinion, they just seem to be distrustful of local government and believing that they, that they should control everything, whether it's fireworks or hunting or sale of town-owned property or guns and guns at meetings and everything else that they seem to want to be in charge of. So this council and all previous councils have been very mindful of respecting this charter and keeping it for posterity for the one day when something does occur, where it may be that the town of Silver City has to say, "We're going our own way in this particular subject," rather than follow the lead of Santa Fe. And that's basically what the charter is. It's a, a document issued to the town of Silver City by the territorial government of New Mexico in 1878. It's the most liberal charter ever granted, and we're the only, there were two other charters. Santa Fe gave its up. It had a charter, and it gave it up. And the other charter went to a town, I can't remember the name, but it became a ghost town in the 1920s, and they revoked the charter. They, they gave it up. So right now, the town of Silver City is the only territorial charter in New Mexico, and it is, it is alive and well.
Thank you. I want to thank Chief Renault for taking care of the issues about handicap parking. Uh, there has been a lot of complaints made on certain parts of the town where people are taking up the handicap parking, one vehicle or two vehicles at a time, staying there 24 hours a day. Thank you, Chief Renault. That was very appreciative. Mr. Brown, I have a question for you. Have you inquired about the Riverwalk papers that I submitted to, that they gave me from Santa Fe?
Yes, we, we received them, uh, the information back from, I believe it was Senator Uval's office. Well, you wrote the letter to all of them, and, and we did get the grants, different types of grants that we could apply for. And I passed those to Peter Russell, and they've been looking at the different options that we can look at to move forward.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, no comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Bedison.
No comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Nothing.
Sign none, the agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular meeting August 13th, 2013.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I'm going to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting of August 13th, 2013.
There's a motion by Councilor Bedison and a second by Councilor Ray to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council of August 13th, 2013. Is there any discussion? There's a motion, a second, no discussion, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council of August 13th, 2013. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is under reports. Mr. Brown?
No response.
Chief? The next item on the agenda with action is under new business, approval disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for the Ninth Annual Gila River Festival's Gala for the Gila Event on September 21st, 2013, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Javelina Coffee House, 2001 North Bullard, Silver City, New Mexico, license holder, Little Toad Creek Distillery, number 63004, and Little Croak, Little Toad Creek Brewery. I did that last time, too. Number 67021, at 1122 Highway 35, Mimbres, New Mexico. Councilor Cook, just go easier.
Um, I'm not sure I can vote on this. I think everybody would know how I would vote, no matter what. I'm all for it. And, um, but I will step out and not vote if it's to the best interest of everybody.
You need to disclose why.
Why? Um, the reason I'm making these comments is because I am the owner of Javelina Coffee House at 201 North Bullard, where the event will be. Um, there is no personal gain. I actually will be losing money because I will be closed, and it's their, it's their benefit. So I don't really benefit from it. I'm just a nice person.
I'll, I'll consider it. Taking that into consideration, is there anybody that objects to Councilor Cook participating in this discussion?
Nothing.
No? There's no objection, so you're entitled to participate, which does give you the burden of having to vote. Anybody here to speak on behalf of these permits?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Walter Shemansky, and I'm, and I'm pushing the red button. And I'm speaking here this evening on behalf of the Gila Conservation Coalition, which is sponsoring the Ninth Annual Gila River Festival. You folks have already, in a previous meeting, approved a, permits for the, for the gala, for the Gila River. But subsequent to your approval, we have had a change of venue, and so indeed, the gala will be held at the Javelina Coffee House. And just as a refresher, this is the first year, it's the Ninth Annual Gila River Festival, but this is the first year that we will be holding a fundraising gala. And that'll be Saturday evening from, on September 21st, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM at Javelina. It's a fundraiser dance, and will include a silent auction and live music by The Roadrunners. Little Toad Creek Brewery, Little Toad Creek Distillery will provide beer and spirits for this event, and that will be in addition to non-alcoholic refreshments that will also be available. So we are requesting that the town council approve these two celebration permits. And, um, my understanding, an application, there's been a map attached to the application which shows that there are not any, um, churches within 300 feet of this event. So there's some questions I might like to answer, and that's our presentation.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience like to speak on behalf or in opposition to this application, these applications? Sign none, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
I move to approve of two public celebration permit applications for the Ninth Annual Gila River Festival Gala for the Gila Event on September 21st, 2013, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Javelina Coffee House, 201 North Bullard, Silver City, New Mexico. License holders, Little Toad Creek Distillery, number 63004, and Little Toad Creek Brewery, number 67021, 1122 Highway 35, Mimbres, New Mexico.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion, as stated.
There is a motion, a second, to approve. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion, a second, no discussion, to approve two public celebration permit applications for the Ninth Annual Gila River Festival's Gala for the Gila Event on September 21st, 2013, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Javelina Coffee House, 201 North Bullard, Silver City, New Mexico. License holders, Little Toad Creek Distillery, number 63004, and Little Toad Creek Brewery, number 67021, 1122 Highway 35, Mimbres, New Mexico. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck. Next on the agenda is approval disapproval of Resolution Number 2013-32, Adoption of Town of Silver City Water Conservation Plan. Councilor Cook?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution. Let's get on with the show. May I introduce somebody that can tell us all about it?
You absolutely can.
I can?
You may.
Denise Smith, please. Step up and explain.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Um, Denise Smith, I work for the Office of Sustainability here in the town of Silver City. And I'm really pleased that we have a water conservation plan now, that we're asking approval of the resolution from the council. We started this process in 2011. The funding came from an MFA. And through our process, we hired DB Stevens, Daniel B. Stevens, uh, who also subcontracted with Joanne Hilton, who's right here with me, who's actually available to answer some questions. We had three stakeholder meetings where we involved the public who wanted to provide input on this plan. We went through a public review and through several revisions. So we now have a working document with goals and recommendations. And, uh, the, a water audit is a large part of the document. Um, this came about because the, for any funding from the state in New Mexico fell having to do with water conservation projects, you need a water audit done. And the contractor that we hired was able to do a good job on that water audit. We're going to take stock of this plan in five years or so and see where we are and make adjustments as needed. Uh, but I do want to report that we just finished one of our biggest, our first job, which I think is one of the most important, and that is installing a smart irrigation controller, smart irrigation system at the Ben Altamirano Fields. Those fields were the, that was the top water user of all water users on the whole system. So we're hoping to save a bit of water there, in fact, quite a bit of water there, by using the smart controller system. And I want to introduce Joanne Hilton now.
Okay. Uh, just add a couple of brief things to what Denise said, and then I'm open for any, any additional questions, but I'll try to just summarize real quickly what we've got here. Uh, again, just to go over the purpose of doing this exercise, besides good use of water resources in the desert, uh, as Denise mentioned, there is a requirement for funding for any water suppliers over five, that provide more than 500 acre feet. They have to, you have to complete a plan like this to get funding for grants for the Water Trust Board or other, on New Mexico financing. And also, the completion of the plan allowed for funding through the Arizona Water Settlements Act. Um, so as, as Denise also mentioned, a large part of what we did and what's included in the plan is a water audit, which is looking in detail at your billing records and records of production and different use sectors, so that a, a plan can be tailored specifically to the situation in Silver City and to meet your goals. Some of the goals that were identified through the stakeholder process were reducing outdoor use, because that would really result in a net savings, and reducing water waste and energy efficiency and peak demand. Were also important, as was revenue neutrality, so that conservation wasn't so extreme that the system had a loss of revenue. So with those things in mind, a number of recommendations were put in the plan. Uh, there's, these are not binding, but they're, uh, goals for the town to focus on as funding and resources are available. And there's a number regarding system components, such as upgrading of metering, automatic meter readers, uh, and billing software, ongoing programs such as leak detection, uh, doing more with outdoor conservation and, uh, water harvesting programs and zero scape, and then also, uh, public education programs, and in the longer terms, other things as well. So I'll stop there unless there's any particular questions.
Anybody in the audience have any comments, questions regarding this topic?
Uh, Mayor, Councilman, uh, I'm Sissy McAndrew with the Southwest Mexico Green Chamber of Commerce, and we, of course, support this. We think it is a responsible thing to do, and are pleased that our, our city and town has continued to move forward with reasonable, uh, plans, and we think this is the next step, and give it our, our whole heart and support.
Anybody else? Sign none, council?
Here.
Councilor Bedison?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment that today, um, as part of the Mexican community conference, I participated in a service project in, at Dream Tree. And one of the things that, uh, this is a, a place where, um, at-risk youth, um, are housed and, um, are, um, provided with, uh, capabilities to move forward in their lives. And, uh, there's also, uh, shelter there for other at-risk youths, um, younger, um, 12-year-olds and up. But one of the things that I was in charge of doing was helping to clear out their storage rooms. And in doing the process of doing the storage room, we were putting things in different categories, and one was recycling. And, uh, every time I asked a question, I said, "Well, we could recycle this." I was told, "Well, no, not here." And so, um, like our recycling program, the water conservation, um, plan that, um, is very interesting reading, really puts our, our town on the map and moves us forward. Um, we really stand out, um, across, uh, New Mexico as being very forward and very, um, progressive in making sure that our community is conserving, um, water or conserving energy, um, as we have with doing the SCADA system, doing, uh, um, you know, uh, solar panels at the wastewater treatment plant, and then, of course, with our, um, recycling program that we do, um, with the county and the other, um, agencies. So, um, I, I think this is wonderful, and, um, I was impressed with what the town has done to mitigate, uh, for instance, the non-revenue, um, the non-revenue water use and the fact that we've already dropped that significantly by the town's effort to identify and fix leaks and accurately near, um, uh, water use. So, um, I'm, I'm very pleased with this and, and wholeheartedly support it. And I, I just want to state that I, that everybody was impressed today with our recycling program, and I think that this will also be used, um, throughout the state as something that folks can look to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Maranas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, a brief, brief comment. When I got this in the package, I, I didn't know what to expect when I started reading this, and, um, I was very pleased at, actually, what I deemed to be very, a very practical approach at, at looking at water conservation. It, uh, I, I think it's something that, that can be, we, we can start implementing a lot of things in a, in a relatively modest manner at, at relatively low cost. It, it makes a lot of business sense. We're, we're looking at, uh, being able to, to monitor the system, to, to bill appropriately, to, um, to, to be able to see what, what usage we, we have and, and to detect leaks much, much easier and, and start, uh, even implementing, uh, part of this, uh, plan even before it's even adopted. But, but the fact that it's so practical that some of these things are, um, they just have to be done, and, and it's, uh, it, it was nice reading this document from, from the perspective of how, uh, business-like it is and how practical, and, uh, I, I see this being, uh, something that, uh, help keep us from wasting now and, and making sure that we're not wanting later in a, in a good, practical manner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Cook?
Mr. Mayor? I move to approve Resolution, Resolution Number 2013-32, Adoption of the Town of Silver City Water Conservation Plan. And then we would like to delete the last "that," which says that town staff is hereby authorized to do all deeds necessary in the accomplishment of the herein above.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
I'd like to see the motion as stated.
There's a motion, a second, to approve Resolution 2013-32, amending it to remove the second "that" on the now there "for's." Just to comment, the removal of that, that line is actually redundant to the structure of the town and what staff is, under our charter, our ordinances, is required to do. So having that in there is just totally not necessary. I did have a question on, on the plan. Have you checked the projects that were put in the plan against the state, state laws, um, state engineer rules, NPDs permits, and where none of these would violate or compromise any of those?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilors, uh, we, we didn't do a detailed design on specific projects. That will be done at the implementation phase, but I think the issue with the NPDs permits was some, something in particular, a concern with the water harvesting, or the, or stormwater permitting? Is that what you're asking about? So we, we, we did consider that in general and, and put some guidelines in the, in the plan that, that, just noting that that is a consideration in the exact design of the project, and we, we did note that in the plan.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Bedison?
I just want to say kudos to the Office of Sustainability and, um, all of the town staff, um, who have worked hard on doing this. I, you know, and all of our folks in the water department and, uh, Mr. Scavern, all, all sorts of folks have been working on this, and I just want to thank everyone.
You might not want to if this doesn't pass.
Well...
Thank you, Counselor. There's a motion, a second, no further discussion, to approve Resolution Number 2013-32, Adoption of Town of Silver City Water Conservation Plan with the amendment of deleting the second "that" on the now there "for's." Um, roll call, please.
Aye.
Counselor Bedison?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Aye. Counselor Ray?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of Resolution Number 2013-33, a resolution declaring the eligibility and intent of the Town of Silver City to submit an application to the New Mexico Department of Transportation for federal fiscal years 2014 and 2015, Transportation Alternatives Program Funds. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, Council, um, this, uh, resolution will authorize staff to submit, we've already submitted a pre-application, and, uh, the applications were reviewed. The town actually submitted two. We submitted one for a bridge on the, a walking bridge, uh, to continue the walking path down in the big ditch, and we submitted-
in the big ditch, and we submitted a second one, which is retaining wall and sidewalks at Etrito Head Start on Cooper Street. The projects were reviewed by the RPO, and there were three projects recommended, recommended for funding. One was Deming's, Deming Project, a sidewalk project for this year. Apparently, you have to be, if they fund you for engineering one year, they are required to fund you for construction, construction the following year. So Deming had all of their engineering done, and Silver City's project, the El Grito and Lord'sburg project were recommended for engineering for this fiscal year and construction for next fiscal year. So that's the entire, it's a, it's a pot of about $300,000. So the entire pot is allocated for the next two years, and so this, this authorizes us to move forward and officially submit the application and sign the agreement when it, when it comes due.
Anybody in the audience like to comment on this resolution? Seeing none, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ray.
I move to approve resolution number 2013-33, a resolution declaring the eligibility and the intent of the Town of Silver City to submit an application to the New Mexico Department of Transportation for federal fiscal years 2014 and 2015, Transportation Alternatives Program Funds.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion, a second, to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion, a second, to approve resolution number 2013-33, a resolution declaring the eligibility and intent of the Town of Silver City to submit an application to the New Mexico Department of Transportation for federal fiscal years 2014 and 2015, Transportation Alternatives Program Funds. Roll call, please.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of bid number 13/14-2, Silco Theater Marquee.
Mayor, I have a Town of Silver City bid for bid 13/14-2, one for the Silco Marquee. One is from J&amp;J Science, the local bidder, in the amount of $75,000 plus gross receipts taxes, and R.A.M. Studios, Inc. out of Farmington for a base bid, cost of $63,879.04, plus applicable gross receipts taxes. So staff recommendation to award the bid to R.A.M. Studios, Inc. We did do the calculations for the 5% preference for J&amp;J Science being the local bidder, and they were still above the 5% differential.
And the funding source?
The funding source is a grant from, I believe, the Historic.
Historic Preservation Division of San Fing?
Yeah, it's a grant with, from the Historic Preservation Division, as well as the matching funds are coming from the Main Street funds. So the town is not paying anything for this project.
Anybody from the audience like to speak on this bid? You're already up there. You might as well say something.
My name is David Vesicom. I'm the architect on the Silco Theater. The particular, I think the particular bid, if awarded to the contractor, it would facilitate the construction, the delivery of the product on time, and do a very good job for the town and for the client.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak regarding this bid? Seeing none, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ray.
I move to approve a bid 13-14-2, Silco Theater Marquee. Two, staff recommendation, R.A.M. Studios, Inc., the base bid of $63,879.04, plus the GRTs of $4,711.08, and eight cents, for a total bid of $68,590.12.
Second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion, a second, to award the bid per staff recommendation. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go.
This is to restore to Historic Marquee. Is that correct?
One second.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Like the, similar to what we had seen in the presentation, was it over a month ago or more?
Is this, is this going to be representative of what was in the presentation?
Yes, it is. It's basically based upon the 1940 historic president signage.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat, Mr. Mayor, for what is this?
It will be based on the 1940 signage.
Okay. Thank you.
My only other question, Mr. Brown, is, is it really, the name of the company that staff recommends, is that an acronym or is it RAM?
It's R.A.M. It's, it's an acronym.
Would you make sure that the motion reflects that, Mr. Discover? That the motion was for RAM?
It's a ministerial correction. Clerk can take care of that in a minute.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, to award bid number 13/14-2, Silco Theater Marquee, per staff recommendation to R.A.M. Studios, Inc., with a total bid, including GRT, of $68,590.12. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
As opposed to recess?
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
I second the motion.
There's a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.